Roll call, please. Absent excuse though.
Here.
Here. Amendment or approval or amendments to the agenda?
Make a motion, approve it.
Second?
Second, yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Approval of minutes from July 17.
Make a motion, approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Accept it. Zoning Board preface. The Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals, our ZBA primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by section 27.05 of ordinance number 126. There are five members on the ZBA. Only three are present tonight. At least three members must vote affirmatively for a motion to grant a variance. Three members constitute a quorum. Each appeal before the ZBA will have a public hearing, at which time the applicant will first present his or her case, and a public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of clarification. If a particular point gets been labored, the chairperson has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move on to the deliberation of the particular variance request. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to take it to Circuit Court within 30 days of the decision. Excuse me. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you're welcome to leave or stay as you wish. So before I open up new business, I'm gonna just tell you, you have the option to postpone this to next meeting, because this is just the three of us here, which all three of us have to vote in favor. If one person does not vote that way, it would be denied. But I always give it, before we talk about it, I always give you guys the option to say, you know, if you want the other two people here, next meeting, you know, we should have a full quorum, or a full board. If you want to continue, then let's continue. If you want to postpone, let's postpone it currently. We good? Okay. Alright, so we're gonna open up new business, and we only have the one tonight. So it's JZBA 2024-0011@8665COLONIE. Representative, or whoever, come on up, state your name, address, and please tell us, explain what's going on.
My name is Tom Rabelski. I'm a business owner here in Clay Township, but my address is 1611 River Road, St. Clair, Michigan. I'm here tonight to represent Mrs. Baldwin. She's unfortunately out of town, and asked me to present this for her. On the lot split situation, I'm a developer, and I know that people look at developers differently than you would an individual. That's why I wish Mrs. Baldwin was here, because you could sense the sincerity of what she's trying to do. She's, I've known her for years. She's been a resident of Clay Township. She's been a resident of the colony, which she absolutely loves living there. And her goal over the last several years has been to bring her family and her grandkids close to her on the colony. The problem is, is there's virtually no property left on the colony. There's only, I think, three or four, maybe five vacant pieces on the whole street, none of which are for sale. So when this particular piece came up, it fit her situation perfectly. It was a large site. It could be split into two, with your approval, of course. And it would definitely do what she was trying to do over several, several years. This is not anything to gain profit, it's basically to keep a family in one location. To give you a little background on the colony, I'm sure you probably know it, but to give you a little background on it, it was developed in 1926. The developers were way ahead of their time, there was nothing out here. And they developed 111 north channel lots. Lots were all between 50 and 60 feet of frontage, except for one which had 100. That's a very end lot. And over the years, over 100 years, bits and parcel, bits and pieces of parcels were sold to neighbors, properties were split in half. When my parents came here in 1957, we were lucky enough to get a site, and we were offered 50% of another lot on either side if we wanted it. Of course, we couldn't afford it at the time, so we just took the lot, and we've been a resident there forever. What we're trying to do here is basically take a lot that's been incorporated with another site, actually two other sites, and just get it back to the original, original plan, which was done back in 1926. This lot actually would be two feet, two, two and a half feet bigger than the 60-foot sites which are normal. I don't know if you have any questions, that's really the gist of the whole matter. We basically just want to align two sites back to almost what the original, original site plan was.
Okay. Perfect. Hang on. I'm gonna open up public comment. Nobody? I'm gonna close public comment. So how big is this, how is it, how big is it now, Tom?
The whole site?
Yeah.
About 125 feet.
125, you're gonna divide it equally?
Yeah, it'd be 62 and, I think it was 62 and a half.
So it's just two parcels?
Yes, sir.
Right now, it's, you said it's one.
It's one, yeah.
That's correct.
And wants to make it back to the original two, actually bigger than what the original would have been. Correct?
It's absolutely.
But it's still shy of what we need for road frontage, and that's why he's here?
Yeah, the current ordinance calls for 65 foot lots.
65. So it's a two and a half foot-ish variance?
Well, again, this is a split, not necessarily a variance, but we're trying to comply with the other 111 lots that are down there. I'm building a house right now on a lot that's only 60 feet, and that's five foot setbacks. My parents' house was on a 60-foot lot, and if you go up and down the street, the majority of all the sites are between 50 and 60 feet.
But, but just the current, you know, they're asking for a 65-foot. And that's why, that's why the, you know, splitting that lot, that's why we're here for that case, right? Correct? When did that take place, Gary, as far as the 65-foot rule?
I don't know the answer to that question. You could check with our assessor to see when that changed. But yeah, as you know, we have many properties in the township that are 40-foot lots.
Right.
You know, that is a 40-foot lot, billable, you ask this once, it's a lot of record. And so we can go all the way up from there. So with, with the colony, there are a lot of lots that are less than what they're asking for. And, and it probably was originally, and if you look at the layover from the past, you can see where, where the lots were smaller than this one big lot now that they have. So even then, it was, you know, they have a piece of this lot versus a piece of another lot. So, you know, this is not a crazy request, and really, if we look at what the outcome is, that we're gonna take one house that was on this, demo it, which has already been demoed, and put on
Two.
Brand-new houses, that's not benefit to the township, I don't know what is.
Yeah, I don't, that, I mean, just by it being bigger than half of them that are down there, just going through the right channels, right, you understand what they're saying?
I think so.
Joe?
Yeah.
I think that was pretty cut and dry.
I was wondering what's going on with the, the other side, on the other side of the road.
Well, the other side of the road belongs to the same piece, it has a different lot number, of course, because those were canal lots. They're usually set up for garages, boat houses, that type of thing.
That's not being split as well, is it?
Well, the actual split will carry right through, through the canal.
So yes.
On the colony, you can't sell a piece of riverfront.
And not have a
Without selling the canal, they have to be adjoined.
So that boathouse is going down?
It's down.
What's, yeah.
Everything's down, I was there.
I didn't make it out there.
That's why, that's kinda why I questioned it, is because there's the indent where the boat actually was.
Yes.
And I was wondering how you were gonna split, because that's like right in the center.
That will be closed off totally. They're working with the DQ right now to get the proper permits and stuff to do it. But that, that boat well is gonna be gone.
Anything else, Joe?
These other lots that are next to it are already part of these other people's lots already, so.
That's how it was split years ago.
Thirty-foot lot on each side are already part of somebody else's.
Is it beautiful, both those houses are beautiful on both sides of the, these lots. Other ones fairly new, did you, did you build that one, or?
Which one? The one to the right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I did speak to that particular party, that's like the second or third owner, and they have no objection to the split or to the, as a ZBA.
Make a motion?
Yeah, we can make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Based on practical difficulty that the lot sizes, previously were 50 to 60 foot. The new ordinance is up 65 foot. This one will likely fall just slightly below it, but it'll be in line with most of the houses on the colony. So unique situation since there are, there are lots, but they're buildable lots. It's not self-created since, it's part of what pretty much has been going on. That's helped created, because they've had, they've had both of them, they're just making two lots out of the one. And there's similar properties in the, in the, in this colony for this. And some of them are, like Gary said, there's some of them less than that on colony, or I guess they're 50 and 60 foot. And it's not contrary to the ordinance, since this subdivision again was plated 50 to 60 foot and the ordinance is 65, but this colony is certain subdivision with just under the 65.
To second that?
Yeah.
Roll call? Aye. We're all good? Yeah. Yes, I, well, there's only three of us, I was teasing, I was teasing. Okay.
Yes.
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 Okay, that one passes.
Thank you very much, appreciate you.
Okay. Whole new crowd? You gotta write that, Joe, or?
Oh, I'll get it, you get it?
Representative? What's that? What did I say? What did I miss?
It's St. Andrews, parcel A, to clarify.
8665?
Parcel A.
I don't see parcel A. Oh, parcel A, parcel eight, parcel A and B? I don't know, I don't have
One case is parcel A, for 12. It's parcel A.
There's two different, are we treating them as water? Oh, no, I'm sorry. We're going for A first. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't see that. I thought if A got it, B got it. So we're going for A first. So now the lots are divided, Tom, now what are we doing?
Okay, now what we're asking for is a variance from a newer ordinance, which in this case we call for seven and seven-foot side yard setbacks. When this perch, when Mrs. Baldwin bought this property, I don't believe this, then Gary, you can help me with this one, I don't believe this ordinance a year ago was in effect, was it?
Yeah, the required side yard.
Yeah, because we remember when I started the last house, basically that's when he asked me to take, get the work to the colony, which I did do. I thought that's when it went into effect. Yeah, no, okay, okay, okay.
Is it five and 10?
No, it's, it has to be a minimum of five, but in our case, we're looking for five and five on both parcels. When Mrs. Baldwin bought the piece, she had talked to me about it, and basically I told her that the five and five was consistent with the colony association and the colony bylaws and the deed restrictions. So from that point on, she figured that we'd be able to do something that was suitable, that was basically in, in the same line as all the other stuff that was being built on the street, so everything would kind of blend together. And again, I go back to the original deed restrictions. I mean, when you think about going back to 1926, and the forethought that had to go into this piece of property, colony special, I mean, it's different than anything that we have in Clay Township, it's the Gold Coast. They knew going in that houses had to have a certain amount of frontage to build on, and they knew that the setbacks had to be a certain, certain way to allow for people to build houses that were conducive, and that's how they came up with the five and five. All of our, and again, the other setback is the 80-foot river setback, which nobody has except for the colony, which is a gigantic setback, but it also restricts what, how you can build on the lot, because we're not, you know, we lose like 55 feet of rear setbacks, so all of a sudden, our building site gets smaller and smaller and smaller. So that's why we're asking if you would consider what the other homes have, which are in the majority five and five on the colony. These plans have been submitted to the association, they've been approved with five and five. And basically that's, we want to keep everything just the way it is on the colony, and hopefully you could look at the colony as being a special place, and there's, there's good forethought in using the, those setbacks.
Thank you. Do you want to add anything to that, Gary?
Sure.
Yeah, if you don't mind. Excuse me, Tom.
So, yeah, a lot of properties on the colony are smaller than what our current ordinances are. When we talk about lots that are less than 65, the setbacks change. And the, the smaller that they are, the less requirement for the 15-foot exists. Some lots that are down in the 50-foot mark are strictly five and five. And so you can have five and five and be perfectly fine. With a 62-foot lot, there is a provision in the setbacks that says, for every foot that you're shorter than the 65-foot requirement, you can subtract four inches from, yeah, it's in there.
Okay.
Four inches from the required side yard setback. So with 62, that means we're three feet short of that 65, which allows for a 14-foot side yard setback in total. So what they're really asking for is amounts to, you know, three foot and some change. And keep in mind also that there's no side yard less than five. So the two properties that are on either side of this lots or these lots will have that five-foot setback as required anywhere in the township that it would be. The only property that is affected is between these two. These two family members are gonna be five, five foot on each side of that. So it puts their houses, you know, 10 feet apart from each other. So the only ones that are really gonna be affected are these lots. Because on the outboard lots, they get their five feet, which is, you know, our minimum as required.
They get their five feet because there's, they're, it's already got five feet, or it's additional?
That's the minimum.
Five.
You know, and just a general, if you're 65 feet or greater, you need a total of 15-foot side yard, but no side less than five. Doesn't mean you have to straddle it, it just means that you can have five on one side, 10 on the other. I say on this one, though, we're dealing with 14 feet. So when they're talking, I think one side's five, one's 5.3, or whatever, whatever, so, you know, we're just in that realm of, you know, a high three-foot variance that's being requested. But who's most affected by that will be these two lots. Because the outboard lots are getting their five foot, which is the minimum setback required.
They're getting their, they're getting their five foot from the other lot?
Mm-hmm. But realistically, they're still gonna have 10 feet between the two houses, and it could be the same thing, could be 10 feet between the other two houses. Okay. So that's nothing
Correct.
Gotcha. Wow. Gotcha, thank you.
But all the other setbacks are gonna be?
All the other setbacks are met by either
They're not, they're not gonna be
The road
Colony Park Association, or, yeah, road setbacks, everything else is good.
We're not gonna get something later when they're into design of the houses to?
I don't think they can get past association on that part. Closer to the water.
Water. Or the road?
I think that lines up, you know, the preliminary plans.
We don't have any alignment issues with other houses on this one? Like line of sight?
No issues with that at all.
So this is parcel A. Am I fair to say parcel B is the same thing, within inches?
Exactly the same.
Yeah, looks the same. Is it the same house assigned?
Oh, are they different?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I only heard, seen the block diagrams, I didn't see anything more.
I will, open up the public comment. I will, no one? Close public comment. Thank you. So official today, huh?
She says on you, believe me.
I try not to make motions.
You can though.
I know I can, I've heard I can, so I'm gonna start.
No, you don't.
Your turn. Or at least discuss something. For or against it? What are you thinking?
I wanna approve it, but I just don't know, like, all the practical difficulty stuff and all that stuff.
A lot of that stuff was already, they're just trying to go to what everyone has in the past. And sometimes it's difficult to be current, the current ordinance is, when you're already limited, how wide you could have in the past gone. If it was a narrower lot, they would be allowed to go five. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I don't know if that helps you with the practical difficulty, but to me, hearing that description of it, it just seems to be
So do we only need one of these to make, to approve it? Or do I need to do something for each one?
Or are you opposed to any of those? Do you see a problem with any one of those definitions? And that's what we would have to discuss.
It is kinda self-created, but at the same point, it's not, that's what I'm saying.
So it goes back to, you know, like Tom was saying, what, 1929? To where they did 50-foot lots, maybe 55-foot lots, and 60-foot lots? So now we're through the years, as Tom said, taking away bits and pieces from something to, taking a 125-foot lot, right? Or 120?
125.
125. And dividing it, you know, 62 and a half foot versus 60 foot.
So my question is, if we're gonna change it back, even though it was changed for these guys, how are we gonna not have to do that for everybody?
I mean, everybody
The next, the next people that come along and say the same thing, what are we gonna do?
We don't get a whole lot of lot splits, and typically, and
Yeah, these are taxable lots, so. We had a lot split, but it was a non-conforming lot.
Right.
I think it'd be a lot different if we're splitting it to get a non-conformer, and then asking to keep going with that. And I know we don't allow that.
Right.
So
I, I just don't feel comfortable filling this stuff out yet.
Okay.
Well, they would just talk out the without them.
I don't think she has answers to all of them, so she's leaning back towards you. I think that was a play statement, right?
I, yeah, I just, my brain doesn't quite connect on some of it.
And we're talking about practical difficulty is, you know, we're splitting it, who knows when the, the original house was, bought both of those parcels, combined them both, and then built one house? How many years ago was that? Don't know. And now we're trying to go back to somewhat original.
Yeah, right.
But 1929 style, you know?
Yeah, the practical difficulty is the, again, 1929, they were 50 to 60 foot. We're down, down to over six, we're over that, at 62 and a half. Land in the, building and other structures within the district where the 60
Sorry, whose form was that?
For 60 foot, if it was a narrow lot, we would be able to get the five foot. The split, the two, the ones that are being split, where it really matters, will be within the, the two residences. The five foot on the outside of these houses will be over the requirement based on the houses on the adjacent, on, on either side. Pretty similar layout for the other houses in the colony, in the district. Again, it's not contrary to the ordinance, since there's other properties within the districts that have these, this setback. I think, I think we're okay to approve this.
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Chip Taylor?
Here.
Ozie?
Yes.
Yes. Approve section A, or parcel A. So I gotta do it again for B. You got that? I'm gonna open or close that one. Open up JZBA twenty twenty-four dash zero one three at eight six six five Colony Drive, parcel B. Pretty much the exact same, except the letter B. Same thing?
Same thing.
Just say approve as like you wrote on parcel of A.
I make a motion to approve based on the previous discussion we had for A. We'll put that for B, and we'll make a motion to approve it based on the practical difficulty and the other items.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Chip Taylor?
Yes.
Ozie?
Yes.
Trouble?
Yes. And I'm assuming no one came in here for, I gotta open up public comment and close public comment. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
Soon as you finish it, I'm like.
Okay, I'll make a motion on parcel of B, based on the previous discussion and the practical difficulties and the items that we've listed prior for parcel.
A.
A. No, B. The ones I previously discussed for an A, I'll make it for B and make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Ozie?
Yes.
Trouble?
Yes. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, motion approved for both of them. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to, are you good, Joe, for a little bit, or can we rip it through this? Unfinished business? Don't have anything? Report from planning commission? Don't have one yet? Other matters to review with the ZBA? Margie is going to planning, okay? That's why she's not here tonight. She will be hopefully appointed to the ZBA at their next meeting to come back to us, okay? Does that make sense? So they, they, their meeting is next week. So she couldn't come to tonight's meeting because she wasn't appointed there. And then maybe someone else might come from that, but they ought to have a meeting and, and go from there on that. Did you guys hear that at all, as far as Margie?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Open up public comments? Close public comments? One other thing, you know, we're, I'm trying to have a joint meeting between ZBA and planning and possibly the trustees, the board.
A new board.
So to me, I, how I looked at it, when I, I asked Kathy today, the chairperson of the planning, I said, you know, I kind of want to get the three of us together, and doesn't necessarily have to be with the, the board at all, the trustees. You know, our, our business is mostly to deal with planning commission, and we, we shake each other's hands. And if the other board members, you know, come, if Artie wants to make it that kind of meeting, then we'll do that as well. But we have in the past brought all three together. I'm just requesting to bring at least the two of us together to talk about current issues. It doesn't matter who our supervisor is, it doesn't matter who, anybody else, if, if anything changes in November. You know, right now is our businesses are still going, you know what I mean? So I don't want to stall this. So she's, she's working on trying to get us a date to, to do that.
That, that was it.
We talked briefly today and tried to.
Which one do you think you're gonna talk about or?
Um, so a couple of comments. So what I told her is that there's a, a couple cases, I guess, coming in front of us, which is the attic height at eight foot, I think needs to be looked at. The other is detached buildings, the height of it. You know, the ordinance says fifteen-foot mean height, and, and it just seems like everything's coming in greater and greater and greater. And we can break the law, but we can't change the law. So I want them to realize that, hey, maybe it's time to look at a possible change, and that's it. And just get the, the stuff rolling so we go into, you know, maybe next year, I don't even know how long it takes to change an ordinance.
Yeah, if there was some way to make that, the eight-foot.
See, but, see, but Joe, this is what I want to discuss between the two boards, whoever wants to show, you know what I mean? And let's just get it out there. Gary isn't forcing the ordinance, you know what I mean? That's why they come in front of us. He's enforcing the ordinance that's ruled. But that's what I want all of us to say, what if? Why? Why not? How long is this rule? Why, you know what I mean? Why are we opposed to this? Why are we, you know, and everybody can speak.
It's kind of a working meeting instead of just, okay, well, then they'll go back and it won't go anywhere.
So, but we got it off our chest. We did what we're supposed to do. We, we keep hearing every, you know, except this month, you know, we keep hearing an attic, you know what I mean? This eight-foot ceiling heights. How many times have we've heard that in the last three years?
Right.
More this year than any.
I hate to, sometimes not turn them down, but if somebody has a good reason on that day and no good reason the next day, it's a different decision.
But if it wasn't even, if the ordinance would change, and it might not, or the verbiage, something, you know what I mean?
So they can't live in there. That's the biggest way that verbiage needs to change.
Maybe. But then there might be some people, why not? You know what I mean? So that's why I wanted to, to, to have a discussion with people that can't change their ordinance.
They understand what the discussion we're hearing in here about the eight-foot.
Correct. So.
But if they're not, then they're just gonna go out and.
I have asked Amber to start calculating how many cases we've had with both of those. And Kathy was saying, is there three? You know, we don't want to talk more than three issues.
Yeah.
Right now I see only two that we are pretty common, that I would like to discuss during that meeting. And then maybe the planning has something to discuss elsewhere.
Yeah, we don't want to leave it open for Gary to, you know, not be able to do any, you know, cause problems with what he's doing.
I want him to have a little bit more say in that ordinance, you know what I mean? Because everything is a little different, but well, let's hear what other people. And we're still camera wherever you are, still looking for one more alternate to, to join the ZBA. Hopefully Margie comes back, you know, Carla had something tonight, so.
We have five of them.
Bonnie hasn't been here, so, you know, she's, could be replaced easily, you know what I mean? According to the bylaws, it's.
Yeah, because Honey talked to Cindy once on the lot before, and she assumed that Bonnie was gone. I don't know.
I was gonna say, I don't think I've ever met Bonnie, and I've been here since.
She's, she's super nice, you know, she's great, just.
Oh, yeah, I know. It's a loser, or just, I was surprised when they, she said that.
Everything changes, but she still has to show up, and that's why we kind of had the bylaw review, you know what I mean? I love Bonnie to death, but on the same token, I need people to show up. I don't want to have three people at our board.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, it's not fair.
They're fortunate, they stuck with it, but some people would just say, I'm out, you know what I mean? They, they would want to leave if they didn't have, you know, five or four, you know, so. Learned that? That's all I have to say. And then you will be part of emails on that. So I, I guess basically I'll open it up to where if, if we did the planning, if, if they are heavily loaded on the September schedule, then we probably won't have the joint meeting the day that they have their meetings.
When are their meetings, so I can?
Next Thursday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Oh, Thursday was Wednesday too? I thought it was Thursday, or Tuesday. Next Wednesday is their meeting. So it would be a week after our meeting next month.
Okay, I won't.
If we have a meeting.
I won't be at that. I'll be at this meeting, but I won't be at the following, a week after that. I'm moving, traveling to Utah.
Gotcha. But if they're loaded down with a bunch of cases, then, you know, she didn't want to have a long meeting, which I totally understand, you know, so.
Okay.
It's, it's in the process of trying to get the boards together. Okay, adjourn. One of you guys?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.